I now call the order, the May 28th, 2024 regular meeting of the Wellington, Colorado Board of Trustees. Time being 6:30 PM. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I do apologize. Unfortunately, Mayor Chozy is out sick today, so you guys are stuck with me this evening. Mr. Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Moyer.
Present.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason.
Here.
Mayor Chozy. Thank you. We have a quorum.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, any conflicts of interest on the agenda items this evening? Seeing none. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on non-agenda items, please sign in on the sheet behind the podium and state your name into the microphone for the record. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to provide comments. Seeing none. At this time, I will go ahead and close the regular meeting and open the Liquor License Authority Board, time being 6:32 PM. Mr. Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Moyer.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title of and present item C1 to the board?
Certainly. Mayor Pro Tem Mason. One moment, please. I'm just going to do it from over here for the sake of convenience for this evening. So the item before you tonight is a license renewal application for malt beverage and wine type for loaf and jug. They have applied, the loaf and jug in the town of Wellington has applied for an annual renewal of their license. Staff accepted the application on the 22nd of April and have verified that the applicant's in good standing with the state of Colorado. Secretary of State's office and the applicant has a current sales tax license. The applicant provided clarification regarding the premises, or excuse me, regarding permission for use of the property and other information relevant to their license, including a self-reported violation of service to a minor issued by the Colorado Department of Revenues Liquor Enforcement Division in July of last year. They also have indicated the remedial steps they've taken to correct that violation. An inspection of the premise conducted by the LCSO team identified no issues. And they also reported that LCSO had not cited any violations of the premise in the last year. Staff recommend that you consider the remedial action taken by the applicant regarding the violation that was issued by the state of Colorado. And if you find that the remedial action is sufficient to correct the deficiency, that you approve this license item. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any questions from the board on this agenda item? Seeing none. Any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none. Any further comments or direction from the board on this item? Okay. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve the loaf and jug renewal application.
A second.
Mr. Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the application is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I now close the Liquor License Authority Board and reopen the regular meeting, time being 6:35 PM. Up first, we have a presentation of a 2024 first quarter budget review. Mr. Nick Reddavid, Finance Director and Treasurer. On the 2024 budget review, Mr. Reddavid, if you'd approach the podium.
All right. Good evening. My name's Nick Reddavid, Finance Director. Today, today or tomorrow is actually my one-month mark with the town. So what I would like to do is go through the first quarter budget review that was discussed during the budget planning session last year. Keeping in mind that if I don't know the answer, I will definitely take down your question and get back with you. Still learning a lot. We do have Mr. Rhodes in the back with us if something does come up. But what I wanted to do, and the slideshow correlates kind of with the memo that was in the packet, is really start at the beginning of the year, which is also the beginning of the quarter, and look back at 2024, excuse me, 2023 first, just to give an idea of, oh, actually, I think I'm already off. So we'll go through 2023, we will look at 2024 first quarter. And then there were a couple of follow-up pieces from the budget session last year that we wanted to just address and bring back up. Definitely make sure I leave time at the end for some questions. Like I said, my first day was April 29th. Our finance department currently is Janice Foster in our Budget and Accounting Analyst position. Angela, who's our AP Clerk, and Flip just started with us in our Utility Services Coordinator. So our previous Utility Services Coordinator is now at Public Works. And as you can see, we're, there's some transition in our department. Luckily, we've had Dawn as our consultant, who will be sticking around for the 2025 budget session coming here in a few months as a consultant that we'll be able to reach out to as well. So looking back at 2023, where we ended, I wanted to point out the, the operating aspects of the budget. So we all know that it's a big budget. There's a lot of projects going on. But really, how is the town functioning from an operating standpoint? So starting with the revenue, this is our revenue as of the 13th of this month. So we are starting to wrap everything up with 2023. Now, this, just to point out that the budget, the estimate from end of year and the actual amounts do contain impact fees. So that's been part of the budget process, and we do keep them in the same fund currently. Looking at how we might possibly change that up in the future so that we know that impact fees can only be used for certain expenses. Now, and the one revenue I do want to point out is the street revenue. There was a refund to a developer that was, had posted in a prior year's fund balance, so that developer was entitled to the refund, which is why the revenue looks negative in that particular fund. But it was already in the fund, and again, we need to look at how we're doing these types of restricted funds going forward. So. Now, I do want to point out that these revenues, as of November 23, no longer include sales tax. So the Laramie County Treasurer, property tax, excuse me, property tax, thank you. Laramie County Treasurer has been instructed by the state auditor to delay paying our property taxes due to our 2022 audit. The good news behind that is I have met with the auditor and we have started submitting all of the documents for the 2022 audit. And they do expect it to be a three-month timeline. So we are hopeful that by the beginning of August, we will have the 2022 audit wrapped up. The same auditor, Tinkell and Company, will be retained for '23 and '24 as well. So we're anticipating these types of issues will no longer come up. I did also speak with the Laramie County Treasurer. And as of March 2024, so through the first quarter, we're aware of over 870,000 funds that are currently being delayed, which will have a big impact when we look at the 2024 first quarter. We get into our expenditures, you'll see the, where we estimated the year to end is that second column, that was during the budget process. And then we have our actuals. And so the final column is the difference. So we actually estimated that we would be under budget and we came in even lower than that. So I think that's a credit to the town staff and the hard work that they do. When you look at the summary, after you take into consideration our capital projects and our debt service payments, as a, as a whole, the town, the town's budget performed very well. And we did, we are aware of the sewer fund. And of course, the rate study that is in place says that we should be back on the positive side consistently by 2026. So that has all been presented and approved previously for, for the utility rates. So getting into 2024. Now, first quarter is not a typical time to do a financial report, but we wanted to make sure that we were being transparent and providing information to the board and the community as often as possible. But a first-quarter review is not indicative of a time to take action. There is, there are ebbs and flows in a lot of these. When you think of like your water utility goes up in the summer, certain payments are made to the town, different quarters, different times throughout the year. And also payments that we make happen at different times. So while these numbers are helpful to see, they are not necessarily reflective of any trends that we should be concerned about at this point. So when we look at the operating revenue, the operating revenue, especially with the delay in the property tax, is coming in lower than budget at the moment. We do know that, you know, the, especially the enterprise fund, so your water, your sewer and your storm, those will have a bigger impact in the summer, once the water consumption goes up. The general fund is, is, excuse me, is under budget, but is under budget by less than we know is coming in. So with that, that property tax that we're entitled to, we do, and we do know that we are performing better than what is currently seen in the actual. Now, one area I also want to call attention to, this came up during the budgeting session last year, was the sales tax. So when you look at our first-quarter sales tax trend over the last three years, you can see that our sales taxes that we are collecting have continued to go up. The, this starts in 2022, which is following the change from the Wayfair case. So that was when we were now able to collect sales tax on delivery. So anything before that was, this, this shows the trend since then. So with, with the sales tax, we're seeing that it's gone up in, obviously, overall. And then this is a breakdown in where it goes per fund. So it is split with the general fund, the street fund and the park fund. And we're, you can see how that has broken down. So. Getting into operating expenditures, the, do look optimistic based on year-to-date data through March. Again, first-quarter data, though, doesn't contain all of the story. So while these are under budget, there are some significant payments coming up, such as North Butter Irrigation District and Box Elder. Additionally, the debt service payments for water and sewer already at 50%. So we've already made 50% of the payments for the year, even though we're only a quarter of the way through. So. The overall, you do see the, does show a deficit of 710,000, which again, is less than the property tax revenue. So we do, we are, we do feel good about where our financial picture is at this moment. And we do. Yeah, so, excuse me, the deficit in the general fund will be made whole, exceed projections when property tax revenue is paid. And that brings me to where we follow back up on another item that came up during the budget session, which was budgeted personnel requests. So there were, there were some positions that were requested. 3.75 FTE requested during the 2024 budget that, for Public Works Planning, Parks and Recreation and the Library Departments. It was estimated at that time that these requests would account for approximately $275,000. That was included in the budget, but at the board's direction, hiring of those positions was delayed to see this, to see this quarterly update. So now, at the time, if we were to hire and those positions were to start on July 1st, is estimated to cost about $137,500. So, and just as a reminder, these requests are what was requested as of September 2023 during that budget session. So it was a civil engineer, one or two, a planner, one, two, Parks and Recreation Operations Supervisor and a library clerk. That was as of that time. So. And at this point, I, I do, I do feel comfortable saying that, given the current status of the budget and the funds that are entitled to the town, I do think the staff could be directed to pursue filling these roles as anticipated, but we would leave that direction to, to the board. And I also wanted to share that we will be starting the 2025 budget process here soon. So keep, keep an eye out for that. One of the goals with that is to look at a five-year projection in the general fund like we do already in our enterprise fund. So having a farther range look to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the town. And I will entertain any questions.
Awesome. Appreciate the presentation, Mr. Reddavid. We'll go ahead and open it up for questions. Trustee Cannon, if you would like to start.
Couple of questions for you, Mr. Reddavid. We receive property taxes from Laramie County twice a year. And so when is the next one would have been scheduled if they weren't going to delay? Because I'm assuming that they're not going, they're going to delay the, the first payment from 2020, I guess that's 2023 property taxes that are paying now, but we could be $1.7 million deficit in the general fund by the time the audit is finished. And then my question to you is, is that going to cause any kind of cash flow issues for the town for paying, you know, ongoing obligations and so forth?
I don't have an exact date of when that second payment, or when the payment comes in. I do know we received monthly payments from the county treasurer that those have been delayed. The last one we received was October. So once the audit has been submitted to the state and they're, they're instructed to release the funds, we'll, we'll start receiving those again. As far as the cash flow, no, we do, we are well-capitalized and do have options available through multiple of our accounts and that's spread out with our investments and whatnot as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cannon, Trustee Moyer.
Kind of in the same vein, can you, do you know what the timeframe or the timeline is between the completion of the audit and the release of those funds and kind of back to normal?
So I, I do know that we recently, a few weeks ago, I think the private of my start submitted the 2021 audit. And I, when I spoke to the state auditor, they had begun to process our release of funds. So I don't know the exact timeline on that yet, but that is something I could ask about and get back to you on.
Thank you, Trustee Moyer, Trustee Teets.
So I see it was 870,000 is what we were saying that we're expecting for property taxes that was held over. And then 710,000 was the negative that we were seeing in that budget thus far. So 160K, 137,000, if they're hired after July 1st, would still leave us in a positive of 23,000 if everything goes according to plan.
And, and the budget actually was, so when you saw the, let me get back to these, the 2024 budget included those positions already. So it does include that, that original amount in there.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Teets. Trustee Wiegand.
That was pretty much my main question, too. And so if things go south a little bit, you still think we're going to be in good shape on our budget? And as far as being able to have enough money to pay the extra hires? Or would it might be more prudent for us to kind of go with the new hires, kind of step by step, you know, make sure, you know, get the ones that are in dire need right now? And then just kind of, you know, maybe bring back some of the hires later on down the year? Might be something we want to think about. I mean, it's, I know all of them are critical to a certain extent, but I think we want to go, you know, slowly. I know we're, we're close on the budget. You know, a few hiccups here and there, you know, can change the budget pretty quick. You know, it's just like what's happening on the water plant. You know, we got another, what, 60, 70,000 worth of expense coming there. So I mean, things like that can happen. So I mean, I think if we're real tight, we probably should walk slowly on the new hires is my only concern. But thank you for the presentation. I thought it was great. I loved the breakdown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Wiegand, Trustee Daly.
I'm going to go the opposite direction of Trustee Wiegand. So what I'm noting here, obviously, was a decision we made in, in last year for budgeting to, you know, we directed to, to delay those essential hires. My question, of course, and actually, it's not a question, it's more of a, maybe a consideration or recommendation in the future, is given that there is such a reduction in the expected expenditures for personnel requests, my wonder is if that difference would be best spent, you know, implementing economic development progress as soon as possible. Obviously, in a new role or, or investments in economic development that is going to relate directly and completely correlate to increased sales tax in the future, which will then pad our 2025, or at least hopefully, we're, we'll start gearing up by that time. So. In, in completely opposite direction or, or consideration, I might consider or, or recommend that we start economic development efforts sooner rather than later to help increase our sales tax going forward. So, you know, just something to consider as we see how the budget goes after probably the second quarter. But I'd love to get that kick-started. Really, it's just going to benefit the town going forward immediately. So. To respectfully disagree or to, to see, to see. So that's the only thing. But the presentation was fantastic. Thank you so much for these great insights and call-outs on the, on those items. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Daly. Trustee Wiegand.
I agree completely with Trustee Daly there. I think that we have talked about economic development and that has to be on the front burner. And you know, some of the other things possibly can go on the back burner a little bit, but I think that should be right up front. And I agree 100%.
Trustee Moyer.
I just want to be very clear. So you're saying that the positions that were requested last year are already included in our budget. We are under-spending by over a million dollars. And by hiring them after quarter one, we're already saving $159,000, $160,000 essentially. So there's no danger in hiring these positions and looking at economic development, exploring that option. I just don't want anyone who's listening to, hear four positions and start to get worried because I think that we have insurance, so to speak, in these other accounts that you mentioned. And we're already saving a considerable amount. So I'm not concerned at all, and I'd like to see our staff continue to have the support they need. Thanks.
Any further comments from the board?
Want to thank the city or the town and the administration on that because it looks like you guys have done a great job of managing the town's money. Appreciate that.
Thank you. If, Mayor Pro Tem Mason, thank you. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the economic development position. During our, we'll be holding, we'll be conducting a compensation study here very shortly. A couple of different types of positions will be looked at so we can have a salary range for that position. Based on however the discussions we're going to go tonight, I'm meeting with several leadership members tomorrow who had requested positions to make sure that these positions were still relevant. Is this what they still need? And, you know, make some decisions from there. So we may not be filling all of the positions based on need. But I will make sure to let you all know, we definitely want to take into account what, what is happening with the organization moving forward and what's the best, what is the best way for the organization to move forward? So definitely checking in with my team, making sure that these positions are still warranted and, and these are the positions that they need. And then talking about bringing in that economic development that Trustee Teets had brought up during the budget season and you as well, Trustee Daly. We heard that loud and clear and we agree 100%. So thinking about how that fits into our organization and I'm talking to some other managers to see how, when they brought in economic development in a small municipality like this, what, what was the best way to do it? And how were they successful? So we will report out on that at a later date as well.
Excellent. Appreciate it, Administrator Garcia. I would agree with my fellow board members. Absolutely, I think economic development is critical for Wellington moving forward and having a director in that type of position would be excellent. So very much look forward to hearing more about that. I would also like to see those positions filled, if, if, if necessary. And obviously, considering that we're saving about 137,500 and those positions are already budgeted for, I would very much like to see those come to us at a future date. So. Mr. Reddavid, appreciate the presentation?
Thank you.
Up next, we have a presentation from Ms. Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works on Water Sourcing. Ms. Smith.
Evening, Mayor Pro Tem and trustees. Let me have one second to get my screen shared. Okay, we have, again, Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. This evening, you have several water-related items on the agenda, so you'll see me and I think every section of your agenda tonight. Let's start by, so in, in preparation for some additional items that are coming later on, Ms. Garcia and I decided that it would, it would be probably been really beneficial to you all to have a little bit of a reminder of background of some of our water source, our water sources, some of the planning efforts that we're kicking off and also to ground our newer board members with some of that same information. So we'll start. So we're all starting from, from a similar place. So just to kind of dive in, and I am fine with questions answered along the way, if that's preferable. It is kind of, it can be a confusing topic, so I'll leave that up to you. We do have three groundwater wells as part of our source water supply portfolio. Those are collectively known as the Wilson Wells. They're actually located not too far from here. They are decreed for a total pumping rate of two point five six cubic feet per second. And they are kind of the clinch, the linchpin for their use is that they are augmented up to four hundred acre feet annually through the Cache Lippouda Water Users Association known as the Pooter Plan. So it's a pretty flexible and kind of an, an older augmentation plan that, that we could not get into now. It does allow us to essentially pump water from that well as if it's an alternate point of diversion for, for, for that water source. And it's just pretty flexible in nature. So that's great. Out of those wells, we do, there is a fair bit of, of non pot irrigation that takes place. We irrigate library park here and the associated ball fields. Pooter School Districts irrigates all of Icestone, both north and south with, with those wells, probably annually about twenty five acre feet of irrigation from that source. We did utilize in early two thousand, so two thousand and four, they installed a nano filtration membrane unit or skid at the Wilson Wells in order to enable utilizing some of that water as treated potable water. And so we have been utilizing that as a source of, of potable water since that time. We also include, completed an upgrade to those wells in 2020 with increased pumping rate capacity, also just some, some new construct or updated construction just to increase reliability and the redundancy of those wells and that system. That was a successful project. It's, there's actually still ongoing upgrades, upgrades that are happening to those well sites. Both of them are, can be precarious. There's some minor safety concerns at times with lengths of steps and entrance points and stuff. So we're still continuing to make upgrades over, over time with those well sources. In the early nineteen eighties, nineteen eighty three to be exact, the town of Wellington entered into a water supply agreement with the North Pooter Irrigation Company. North Pooter's headquarters are here in town. They kind of, they consider Wellington to be their hometown as well. At that time in nineteen eighty three, forty plus years ago at this point, it was a pretty good deal for the town. It did, it was more than a pretty good deal, to be honest. It secured two thousand acre feet of firm supply. And what that means is that we can rely on that supply regardless of drought conditions in the basin or other risks and concerns. So it's, it was a, a strong safety net for the community. Part of that arrangement granted the town use of property along Reservoir Three to site our new, at that time, water treatment facility. So, but prior to the current expansion efforts at the direction of the board, we did pursue purchase of those properties in order to own the land on which we are looking to place a thirty five million dollar expansion effort. In that process, we did close on that property. It was longer than it, I would have hoped to take mainly due to piecing out those parcels from, from broader parcels. So that, that time with the county took a little bit of effort. But so we did secure that purchase in August of 2023. We purchased that land at the request of North Pooter with a transfer of, of stock. So we transferred four shares of North Pooter stock back to the company. That purchase did include pipeline easements, both out into the reservoir as well as the pipelines that go from our intake facility on the southern portion up to the water treatment facility on the north end. And we did secure an amendment to that nineteen eighty three agreement that reduced the administrative fee from seven percent to one and a half percent. So that was a, a pretty good success, if I don't say so. That did save us this past year. Because of the timing of the purchase, essentially that reduced interest rate, or excuse me, that reduced assessment fee was only active for August, September and October of this past year. So it was a prorated reduction, but it did still save us several thousand dollars. Further, as we go into that reviewing that water supply agreement, it also, so it granted us use of that property, which we needed to cite our water treatment facility. It also granted us use of storage in their reservoir, allowed us to, them to place water in their reservoir for us to utilize. And three, they identified three buckets of water, if you will. And we're going to, you're going to hear this a couple of different times because it'll be in other conversations that we have tonight. But there was, we transferred to them at the time of signing that agreement, fifty three shares of North Pooter stock. And at that time that secured us, they essentially gave us the equivalent of five point two five acre feet of yield for each one of those shares. That's an incredible deal. So we received use of two hundred and seventy five acre feet of what's known as the stock water, if you will. And that, we have use of that water at the cost of the annual assessment rate per acre foot plus that administrative fee. So for example, in 2023, that was thirty eight dollars an acre foot. So it's a, a great deal for the town. Now, there were two other buckets that were, they were identified separately in the agreement, but for all operational and financial purposes, they're, they're the same. There's an additional water bucket of two hundred and twenty five acre feet. And then on top of that, an option water that was identified that we could choose to exercise or not at the time of execution of that agreement for an additional fifteen hundred acre feet. Now fortunately, our forefathers forty years ago did exercise that option that was by far, and you know, in hindsight, you could, it's 2020. That was the, the best thing to have done. They did exercise that full option for the full fifteen hundred acre feet. Now, the catch with, with those, those two buckets of water is that there is a formula in that agreement that is what, what we kind of coined as a market based formula that is tied to the market rate of a North Pooter share. It is also tied to the annual assessment rate, that admin fee, of course. And then also an interest rate, real farm and ranch real estate interest rates. So both of those, both that, that share value and that interest rate piece, of course, we don't have control over either. We don't have control over any of the variables in that equation, unfortunately, other than the amount of water that we use. If those go, those increase, they can have a disproportionate effect on the rate, the per acre foot rate that we are charged in town, as has been witnessed over especially, I mean, it's been increasing rapidly since probably 2016, 2017, but then in a rapid, rapid rate in 2022 with the ever increasing interest rates that have seen around the globe. So just to illustrate that ever increasing both market share or market price as well as those interest rates, you can see those blue dots there are North Pooter company transactions per share with that Y axis on the left giving you the dollar amount per share. And then that orange line there is that farm and ranch real estate interest rate. This is an average based on Bank of Chicago farm and ranch real estate interest rates. You can see that trend, that giant trend that went up from twenty one to twenty two and on to twenty three. So that had a giant impact on the rate that we pay for that water. As I mentioned, there was ever increasing rates even happening in those kind of twenty six, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen timeframe as well. And it was at that time that the board and staff at that time embarked on kind of initial water source planning effort. So in that year, there was a water supply alternatives report that was developed by Wright Water Engineers. They, as part of that report and effort, they developed demand estimates for the town and came out with four primary recommendations from that report, which can include continuing reliance on that eighty three agreement, which we have done. It included continuing that reliance on the Wilson Wells, which we not only have done, but also put some increased capital improvement projects to ensure the longevity and usefulness of those wells as a reliable source. A couple of other recommendations that were included as top recommendations, and there was a, an elaborate matrix of, of possibilities that came out of that report. But a couple of the top recommendations that were made were working to develop an agreement with a, with a regional wholesale water provider. So with the tri districts being at the top of that list. So that includes Fort Collins Loveland Water District, East Limer County Water District, North Weld County Water District. All of them, Fort Collins, at this time, Fort Collins Loveland Water District wouldn't have been a neighbor of ours. It would have been mainly Elko or North Weld County. However, as we can, we'll touch on a little bit more, a lot of things have changed even since 2017, when this report was finalized, including the fact that Fort Collins Loveland Water District will become a neighbor of ours as they are part of the Cobb Lake Water Treatment Authority that is now building a water treatment facility, large scale treatment facility just south and east of the town of Wellington. One other recommendation was purchasing into one of, a couple of possible groundwater projects, non tributary groundwater projects. And there are some, again, examples of how quickly in, you know, seven years, the playing field can change a little bit around what's, status of some of these projects. At this point, you know, Terry Bison Ranch is, is, has been developed by the city of Greeley. They're working to develop portions of that for their long term water supply. There are other comparable, there are other, I don't know if comparable is the right word. There are other non tributary groundwater projects in the works out there as well in our region. And so it, it is interesting to watch how quickly some of these change and what the opportunities are to even jump into some of these projects now versus what they might have been in 2017. So as you see later on in the packet this evening, we, I am bringing forward to you a contract for consultant services for a water source development plan effort that was part of our approved budget in 2023, as a matter of fact. However, as we were diving into and trying to kick off some of that project, it became very apparent that managing and dealing with, you know, an increase of, you know, from twelve hundred to thirty seven hundred dollars an acre foot with North Pooter costs kind of took over a lot of that, that, those resources to, to navigate, right? It took priority over perhaps diversifying that portfolio. It was just getting our portfolio to a point that we could afford it and continue to afford it. So that did get that put on hold as we focused on that renegotiations with, with North Pooter. However, staff feels pretty good about where the direction of those negotiations are going and are looking to move forward with this water source development plan effort with a little bit of difference or a little bit of extra, I would say, building upon that, that the water alternatives analysis that was done by Wright Water by also including a formal implementation plan. It would also include a financial analysis to determine how it is that we can afford to pay for the choices that, that we would make in that, in that planning process, right? What do we see as being a long term solution for the town to move forward? Another piece that I would say will be involved in that, and I, I wasn't here, I'm sort of looking at trustee Cannon. I wasn't here at that time, so I don't know exactly the involvement of the board of trustees in that effort. We would be looking as, as we dive into that water source development plan effort to solicit a couple of members of the board of trustees to kind of go along for the ride on this effort. It will take, and we'll get into this more later tonight, but it will take a committed, this is a program, right? So this wouldn't be developing a one, this isn't developing a one off project. It's developing a long term commitment by the, the town and a program where we are appropriately funding, you know, determining exactly what we need and appropriately funding that in order to, to achieve security for the long term future. So I know all of you are well aware of how important that is. One additional thing that we've really been working on in the last couple of years is increasing the regional coordination, reach and participation that Wellington has regionally in the water world. So one of the biggest ways that we've kind of embarked on trying to do that is becoming a member of the Northern Colorado Water Alliance. Administrator Garcia, myself, and also Director Gowing, as he can, do our best to attend these meetings. They are typically held quarterly, sometimes a little bit more often. It is really a place for regional, and you can see the list of participants there. So it's not just city of Fort Collins and city of Loveland and city of Greeley, you know, not just the sort of big brothers in the room. Evans is in the room, Berthett is in the room, John Town, Johnstown comes. It's really an opportunity kind of multi fold. I use it a lot as an opportunity to build network with some of the other comparable utility directors in the community to share ideas, troubleshoot issues. But also more broadly, it's really an effort. It started out as an effort to try and bring the, the water participants in our region together, to work together to try and protect northern water, northern Colorado water resources. For example, there aren't many districts in northern or municipalities in northern Colorado that have the same level of funding behind their water resource programs that say maybe Aurora has, or excuse me, Arvada. No, it's Aurora, Aurora's on the east side? Yeah. Geographically challenged. Where they are, they are putting, they have millions of dollars in a very coordinated plan on how they are going to seek out and purchase additional water for their communities. And that plan often includes farms in northern Colorado. And even just as recently as a, you know, a couple of months ago, there was some purchases of a ditch company that went through Windsor. So there, there's kind of an effort to just try and work together to see what we can do to collaborate to ensure that we're keeping northern Colorado and northern Colorado as best as we can. We all, I've also been participating in the Larimer County Water Master Plan effort. So Larimer County is, is a very large land use authority in our region. So for every, every area that's not under, underneath a municipal land use authority, their land use authority is Larimer County. They are not a water supplier, but they do acknowledge that water and land use are tied together and you can't develop one without developing the other. And so they have been working to develop a, a kind of a water master plan that will help them guide their land use planning efforts in the most sustainable way that they can, taking into account the water resources available in different areas through different districts, that sort of thing. One of the biggest goals, including also promoting water literacy in our community. They've been a big participant with the Colorado Water Center and putting on some very engaging participatory events for the community and the publics. Excuse me. At this time, I would love, I, I, this was, there wasn't really anything new in the PowerPoint. I apologize that it wasn't in your packet, but I, I can work as, as needed to amend the packet to ensure that that's there. But I probably flew past some of the things I might have highlighted in the memo that was in your packet. So I'm happy to stand for any questions or curiosities that you've got.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Trustee Cannon.
Thank you for the presentation, Deputy Director Smith. I thought that was very informative, very comprehensive. I don't think anyone has dived more into water than me here, but except for you there. Do have one question. When we were talking about the water plant upgrade and the purchase of the properties and so forth, one of the issues that came up when we started the water plant understand tech was the size of the intake in the reservoir three. Is, was that part of the upgrade enlarging that intake so we can handle the extra capacity?
That is not so. Pipes, no. Pumps, yes. So there are three straws, if you will, into the reservoir from our source, our source water intake station. We have two cans, two cans, so holes in the ground with the pumps in them in order to pump that capacity up to the water treatment facility. So we have increased the pumping capacity. We have not, this effort did not include any modifications or adjustments to the straws in the reservoir.
Thank you, trustee Cannon. Trustee Teets.
I'm super excited about this. So it's something that I have learned a lot about being involved in the, my trustee position over the last few years. It's a lot to learn and a lot to understand and it is ever changing. So I can imagine that you say 2017, there was a lot of agreements and availability of water that had changed. I can imagine that next year we will see differences in even what changes from this year to next year. So that's one of my questions. Is this something that is more beneficial to hold off until next year when they finish everything as far as like planning and availability or partnerships with Glade Reservoir going in? Or is this something that you can join on to different pipelines, so to say, midline as long as you enter into those MOUs and items with other areas?
And we can redirect this question at the time when we're talking about the water source development contract, if you'd like. But I can feel that, so yesterday is likely always the best time to have secured your path towards a water direction or one hundred years ago, if we could have. But the, there are ever changing landscapes. I can't say specific to NISP, so the Northern Integrated Supply Project that you referenced with Glade. There are opportunities now to, to perchance buy into that project if we deem it financially effective and long term secure enough for what we're looking for, diverse enough. There are other opportunities on the horizon as well. So I mean, part of it is looking at diversification as best you can within the cost constraints that the community has. I don't know that that.
No, that answers my question. It does. Yes. Thank you. Other than that, I have had an opportunity to. Other than that, I have had an opportunity to watch some of the Zoom courses and questions, Q and As that they have for a lot of the water stuff, and it is very educational when you sit down and you figure out just how detailed going from like a non-pot to a potable request and the courts that are involved as far as water court and items like that and irrigation. So this is, it's fascinating to me, but I'm very excited in general for Wellington to start looking at a secondary water source and having those supports. It'll be, I mean, even in the next five years detrimental to make sure that we have those additional sources coming through. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Teets. Trustee Moyer.
So I love watching you talk about water. I think that it's really, really exciting to look at the diversification, getting a development plan in place for this particular item. I come from North Carolina where it rains all the time, water's not an issue, but we really do need to plan ahead, you know? And so I'm super excited about what this means as far as security for Wellington. And I'm curious about the timeline. You were talking about wanting to get maybe some of us involved in that process. Do you know when you might start the process and what that looks like long-term?
We would be looking at project kickoff in June, and then that would help scope number of kind of stakeholder group meetings. That's what I would view it as, and, you know, I don't know if I've convinced, told Cody yet that I was expecting his participation on it too, but, so it would, looking at some calendar availability will play into it. So it would be this year, the anticipation for the development, water source development plan effort would be to wrap up end of this year, although as it gets kicking off later and later, gets slimmer and slimmer, that'll for sure be the end of the year, but we're gonna work on it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, trustee Moyer. Trustee Wiegand.
I appreciate the presentation you did. The water source agreement, I think, is gonna be fantastic for us. I mean, if we don't have water, we don't have a town, and this will give us some control and from, it looks like there's a whole bunch of the different communities around that have used this situation, and I think everybody has pretty well benefited from it. And if we only have one source, we're at their mercy, so it's gonna be good that we can diversify a little bit. Another thing, I do appreciate the formula that you put down. It almost puts things in semi, yeah, clearness at that point. You said, you know, the 83 agreement was what, $38 an acre foot?
Well, the, the arrangement that we have for the, what we pay for that first 275 acre feet is $38 a foot.
So what is the average of the next tier that we had? Just curious.
Oh, right now, it's, I think in 2023, it was like $3,800.
Thirty, okay, I believe that's correct.
$3,700.
Right. And do we have any idea what's gonna be happening for this year yet?
We don't.
Okay.
I do know share prices have increased, so they're right now selling in the range of $240. We've had, they've seen about 60, 60 shares have sold so far this year, anywhere from, I think, probably $230 to $250, so.
No, last year, we had almost a half a million extra cost through the water. I think that was the interest. Is that correct?
I don't, I'm not sure I remember exactly, because last year, I know the total invoice-
I know, you had to come up with like almost a half a-
2022.
Okay.
That was 2022, yeah.
We haven't even done 2023 yet.
We have done, we've, 2023 is, is, has been paid, and that one came in much lower because of the irrigation that we, or, excuse me, so much rain that we had last year. And so, you know, double-edged sword, wonderful for the total cost of our invoice, not as good for the total revenue that the utility saw, so.
Right. Price does dictate, dictate usage, so we found out that the hard way. So that is possible that, you know, especially if we have a dry year, kind of like what it's starting out like.
Starting out.
You know, we could have another big hit like we did back in, or 2022, is that correct? So again, that's one thing, you know, we need to plan for those things too, because anything and everything can happen, and it's better to decide on prudence on that, so. But I really appreciate what you did here. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wiegand. Trustee Daly.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I, my major just kind of public service notification is the Town of Wellington website has a lot of resources on smart use of water in your household, so if you are concerned since it is, has been so dry and hot, or, you know, that's what it seems like this week for sure, please make sure that you're checking that out and utilizing water in your home effectively and, and smart. My other feedback is that all of these efforts have aligned very amazingly with our strategic plan, and I appreciate all those efforts and the, the huge focus and proactive actions that have been taken. So thank you so much for focusing on that. I know you have the best interests of the town in mind anyway, because that's, this is so important, but I really agree, agree and appreciate all the updates. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Deputy Director Smith, for the presentation. Very good, excellent background information here, and especially for our new trustees as far as that goes. So just wanted to give you guys another congratulations for getting that administrative fees down, you know, from the 7% to the 1%, that's, that's excellent effort on your guys' behalf. Only other thing I would say here is, I think you had mentioned that you might be asking for a couple trustees to assist coming up with that development project. I know many of us probably would like to participate in that, and I'd throw myself out there as one of those as well. So I do appreciate the presentation.
One, one thing, if you don't mind, to follow up on trustee Daly's comment, I would like to plug really quick, the Slow the Flow program that the town partners with, the Resource Central. We have, that is actively signing up for participants right now. It is a free service to residents of, or customers of the utility. The town had set aside funds to, to cover that for both, I can't remember exactly how many residential audits, but I know that there, there's plenty, plenty left for residential audits. There's also availability for commercial audits as well. And so a team would come out and so, and by commercial, it doesn't just have to be a business, it can, an HOA qualifies as a commercial audit as well. So a team would come out, assess the irrigation spray, the timing, the number of days, all of that, and, and would even sit with you and reprogram your irrigation programmer. So just plug that really fast. And you can find that information on our website. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Sure.
We will go, go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Will the clerk please read the titles of the items on the consent agenda?
E1, May 14, 2024, regular meeting minutes. E2, ordinance number 06-2024, an ordinance of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, correcting the enumeration of portions of Chapter 2 of the Wellington Municipal Code concerning campaign finance complaints. E3, resolution number 23-2024, resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, making appointments to the town's Finance Committee Advisory Board and to the Board of Adjustment. E4, resolution number 24-2024, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Wellington, approving to direct the payment of opioid settlement funds to Laramo County. E5, resolution number 25-2024, a resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, considering a contract for crack seal and chip seal services.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Can I get a roll call, please, Mr. Clerk?
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mason.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously and the consent agenda is approved.
All right, we'll get a, go ahead and move into action items this evening. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title of item F1?
F1, resolution number 26-2024, resolution, adjusting appropriations of the Town of Wellington, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending on December 21, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Nick Redaven, Finance Director and Treasurer, will present this item. Mr. Redaven.
Hello again. Thank you for your time. This resolution will appropriate funds for approved projects, so project, capital improvement projects from 2022 and 2023. These were unexpended funds, so funds from those years that were not used. They were in the budgets, and at that time, those funds were not used. Capital improvement projects are budgeted, excuse me, are approved at the project level. So these funds, we are instituting a formal rollover process where we'll move those, the appropriated funds to the current budget year. So the first are for that, these totals do come from our, the Public Works Department, and I can tell you that these aren't all the full amount of the funds. So it does take into consideration what was used and only, they're only rolling over what they actually need. So the second half of this, the second section, I should say, is, was an inadvertent admission. So during the 2024 budget process, there was funding for, in the Parks Fund for Seasonal Employees, and unfortunately, it did not make it into the final budget book that even I saw on the Finance Committee, and we missed. So this is a correction to that, to provide the funding for those employees.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Redaven. Any questions from the board on this item? Trustee Teets.
I just want to verify again that the funds were there, it just didn't carry over as far as the line item for the seasonal employees? Was it accounted for as, for the total of the budget?
I would have to double-check the total, but I, I do know in the draft versions that were presented to the Finance Committee, to the Board, that it wasn't included there just unfortunately, one spreadsheet didn't talk to another when it went into the book.
Got it.
That is our, our final document.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Teets. Trustee Cannon.
No, I appreciate you bringing this forward there, Mr. Redaven. You know, 2022 and 2023, the funds were appropriated and unspent, and you don't necessarily roll them over like just carry them over. You take an action pretty much like this because they drop into reserve. So, so these are funds that were already been approved for the past three years, past three budget cycles. So it all makes sense to me, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cannon. Trustee Moyer.
No, thank you. I just appreciate as a new trustee, as we recalled earlier, that all of this information is presented so well to soak it all in, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee Moyer. Trustee Wiegand.
Appreciate this. I know the money was already there, it's already been appropriated, already it's been into budget, so it isn't like we're creating a new budget item, so appreciate you bringing it out, and thank you.
Trustee Wiegand, trustee Daly.
No questions, thank you.
Awesome. Appreciate the, the presentation here, or the presentation, what am I talking about? Any, are there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, are there any final comments or direction from the board on this item? All right, do I hear a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I believe staff would like to make another comment regarding something on this resolution before you make a motion.
I noticed in the back that in the resolution itself, we're missing a zero, so I wasn't sure how that would affect if they voted on it somewhere, so I thought we would try and catch that before it gets voted on.
It's a good catch right there.
That was, that was Mr. Director Gowing.
He's got sharp eyes.
I just could stand up fast.
With a motion on this one, you would make a motion to approve the resolution with the amendment to, to the dollar value, so could you state, what is the correct dollar value? Which one needs to be corrected?
It's the 2 million gallon tank coding line item, so 211805030. You can see that 50,000 plus the 24 budget, I think it's, I think they're missing a zero between the two and the five. So it should be 1205112.
Good catch.
Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Smith. Is there a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution 26, 2024, adjusted, adjusting appropriations with the amendment to correct the addition calculation for the line item. A second.
Did you want to state specifically what, what you would like to amend in that line item, your motion, trustee Daly?
Yeah, the addition calculation of 50,000 and $1,155,112.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Did you want a second, Mr. Mayor Protem? Okay, my apologies. Roll call, trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mason.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries and the resolution is approved with the amendment to the stated line item 211805030 with the addition calculation.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Redaven.
Thank you, my apologies for the, the math error.
No worries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the second action item of the evening. Will the clerk please read the title of item F2?
Resolution number 27-2024, resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, considering a contract for water source development planning services.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Ms. Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works, welcome back. Will present this item tonight, Ms. Smith.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem and trustees, Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. You have before you this evening a contract for consultant services to retain West Water Research LLC to provide services for a water source development plan effort. The town did, town staff did utilize a little bit differently than has been done on, on many projects, although we have done it this way for several other things in the past, but we did use a request for qualifications process, which is a little bit of a different as opposed to a request for proposals. So this allows, one of the key things that, that I believe is it allows staff to, to work to develop that scope of work hand-in-hand with the professionals that will be executing it. We received only two statements of qualification from, from applicants through our, our bid search and did go through a, a scoring process with four, four staff who all landed on the same selection, using this, using the selection criteria as defined in the request for, or, excuse me, request for qualifications, and West Water Research was that winning consultant through that process. I did include, I do have with me here this evening Adam Jokers. You all have met Adam in the past, or, or, our, our sitting trustees have met Adam in the past, our newer trustees maybe not, but he's a, a project manager and the Regional Director for West Water for here in Colorado, and could definitely stand for any questions if you have any. But I did include a couple of things in the pack of material this evening. I did include the original request for qualifications, so you could review what it was we were asking for, and, and the shape of that. I included the statement of qualification submitted by West Water, and then of course, in the attached contract is included the, the currently proposed statement of work for, for this effort, for your review and input. And one of the things, if you were able to fine-tooth comb every word of the packet, there was many hundreds of pages tonight, I noticed. It does, it did state in their description of, of their proposal, as I was discussing earlier, about the idea of developing, doing some stakeholder engagements, some pretty purposeful stakeholder engagement for this effort to include, and we have not ironed out exactly what that would look like, but likely to include involvement of one or two members of the Board of Trustees for that effort, because as I did say before, this is really developing a long-term program for the town, and it will be imperative and important to make sure that we're representing the goals of the strategic objectives of the community itself in those efforts. And I would love to stand for any questions, and Adam is here also if you have any questions specific to the statement of work that we've developed or to his statement, their statement of qualifications from West Water.
Great. Thank you, Deputy Director Smith. Trustee Moyer.
I have no questions at this time, just reiterate that I'm very excited to see this moving forward, and I can't wait to see what the outcome is.
Trustee Moyer, trustee, uh, trustee Wiegand.
Like I said earlier, I think this is extremely important, and I'm glad to see us doing it. I know I've talked about having a water board, but I think this is probably way even more important than that, you know, getting qualified people that know how to find water and find water that's economical for the different townships around, so good job. Thank you.
Trustee Wiegand. Trustee Daly.
What a essential service, and it is very reassuring that the rubric used was unanimous, so thank you for that.
Thank you, trustee Daly. Trustee Teets.
I am very grateful for all the additional information that you did put in this packet. It's- It saved asking a lot of questions this evening. I'm grateful that you had also put in there that the rejection of the SOQ was available, that the town was allowed to reject that if they choose to do so. No, I'm very excited. It's good to see you again. And I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what this will produce for our town. How, it's one of the biggest questions we get asked by residents. And I would love to give them additional options as well as extra answers on how we can move forward successfully with water in this town. So I'm very grateful for being able to explore this additional option at this time. Thank you for bringing it forward to us.
Thank you, Trustee Teetz. Trustee Cannon?
Thank you, Director Smith, or Deputy Director Smith. You know, the Right Water Engineers study that you talked about earlier. When I first started as the administrator here in, what, 2017? You know, we didn't have a, a full staff that we have now. We didn't have an engineering department. We didn't have a water expert like yourself. You know, I think we had nineteen employees at the time. And the, the mayor plopped that on my desk and said, here, check all these options out. So that started my journey with that. And I'm very familiar with, with, with West Water Research. I think I've met and had several conversations with Brett over the years. We discussed several options about even hiring West Water to be our water management firm at that time. But that did never come, come about. But one thing I am impressed about is the level of professionalism by our town staff. You know, starting with Patty Garcia, all the way down through the Department of Directors, yourself. The people that, that have the capacity, the knowledge to get things like this to the Board of Trustees and be able to do it efficiently and effectively. I am very excited to have West Water Research be a part of our, our team. You know, I've do Water Leader's Class and, and, and meeting with every single water resource operator here in the North Front Range, including Northern Water, talk about NISP and, and everything else. It's, it's exciting to see that, that we're going to bring on a team that's going to help us identify and give us actually a path going forward. Right Water Engineers didn't necessarily give us that full-fledged, this is the path you want. They just gave us like eight or nine options and said, well, pick the one you like. So, so it was good to see that. I'm excited to have, have West Water on board. Hopefully, as soon as we vote on this. But thanks again for the work you did to bring this to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cannon. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, are there any final comments or direction from the board on this item? I do just want to quickly say I'm super excited about this. This is, you know, would probably one of the most critical things that our, I think, Trustee Teetz hit the nail on the head, which is that I probably have a conversation about water just about every single day. So very excited to get this going. And I can't think of a better firm to have this going. I think we've heard of some of Mr. Joker's successes and very excited to have West Water on board. So do, can I entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve the execution of the Contract for West Water Research LLC for the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I second.
Mr. Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mason?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously and the agreement is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That wraps up our agenda items this evening. We'll move into reports. Do we have any reports from the town attorney?
No report at this time.
Any reports from the town administrator?
I have a quick question. So at the last meeting, there were a lot of proclamations, if I remember right. And so I kind of did, I did a little research online as I was talking to other managers and things and watching some videos of other meetings. And what some municipalities do is they have a board member who is maybe, you know, like they had, we had the Parks and Recreation, Parks Month or something like that. I can't remember right off, but Kids' Parks. So that would have been a proclamation read by Trustee Daly. And if, if you have a specific passion, you know, and there's like mental, the, I think there was like Mental Health Awareness Week or something like that, and that would have probably been Trustee Teetz because that's one of her passions. So how do you feel about potentially being the one reading the proclamation? That is your, that is, is your, your passion?
I love that idea.
You good with that? Okay. And, and then, you know, if there's people that want to come and accept that proclamation, you know, depending, you know, member of the resident or a member of staff. But I like, I liked being able to have our trustees take some ownership of some of those proclamations. And, and, and when you read something that is meaningful to you, it comes out differently. So, all right, if we're good with it, that's how we'll start presenting moving forward.
Yeah, a quick comment regarding that. The members of pros that got to attend were very honored to participate. So I think that's a wonderful idea and a way to honor our volunteers perhaps or other leaders within our community. So I think that's a great idea.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Do staff communications have been included in the packet? Are there any questions from the board on these items? Awesome. Seeing none, we'll move into board reports. Trustee Teetz?
I just want to say congratulations to all of the 2024 graduates from Wellington Middle High School. I know we haven't seen any quite yet come out of the high school, but I'm looking for it. I think it's next year will we see our first graduating high school class. So I'm very excited to get to see that. I got to attend my daughter's graduation this, at CSU this last weekend. So that was an enjoyable experience too. One of the things I know we had talked about during the finance plating and adding the employees has been a regular request, and I'm going to bring it up again, Patty, I'm sorry, for the addition of a community service officer for LCSO to engage with the community. I know that that has been a regular request, I want to say since I've been attending meetings. So probably 2021 has been the request to add an additional officer for that position. So that is also something that I still want to look at and address. But other than that, I just hope everybody has an awesome week.
Thank you, Trustee Teetz. Trustee Cannon?
Thank you. I attended the Kids' to Parks Celebration Fishing Derby a week and a half ago. I've never seen so many kids out there catching fish and having a good time. And the Kiwanis were there doing a bang up job of, of, of getting people fishing poles and, and bait and lined up. And they had donuts from Lamar's, which I love. But it was a lot of fun. I think there was probably about two hundred and fifty kids out there, at least during the time period while I was there. But I remember the first one that they ever did, Kiwanis were very helpful with, with organizing that. And I'm glad that's a project that the town can partner with on that. Got a quick question. Who is the towns represented for the Upper Front Range Transportation Planning Region, the TPR?
The TPR is a little different than the MPO. And the TPR has staff that attend. And that would be Cody Byrd and Bob Gowing and Alex. Evanitz. Thank you. Like, boy, his last name just escaped me. But yes, those are, those are, that's who attend the meetings.
I'd like to get a little more information about where we are at the TPR. One of the pushes that I had when I was working for the town was to switch from the TPR to the MPO because we fit into that region, you know, better than we do the sharing transportation issue with Rush and Estes Park. So I wouldn't mind having a little more information. If you don't mind, if I've met maybe with Bob Gowing and just to ask you questions.
You bet, you bet. And I, I have scheduled Jamie Grimm from CDOT to come and do like a CDOT 101 type thing. And maybe that's the time we can have that conversation with her as well. And that is something that I've been trying, I've been working on since I started as well to get that, that switch in. And we were hoping with the census that it would automatically pull us in into the, into the MPO. And that didn't happen. So now we've got to start, start getting our boots on the ground and, and having our elected officials probably push some of the other elected officials to try to get us in. So we'll talk about that.
I've got some ideas.
Okay, we've got some methodology. We've got some ideas. But we'll, maybe it's, we'll, I'll definitely set up a time for you to meet with us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, two weeks ago, we also received a high-level briefing on Home Rule from Kevin Bonner, the CML Executive Director. It was very high level. It was about forty-five minutes long. And I could tell that the board had some questions. And I recommend that we have another work session on Home Rule while it's still in fresh in people's minds. I put together just kind of a list of, of information that maybe staff could research. And I just go through that. And if anyone has any other suggestions and so forth, I think that'd be great. I think we all kind of understand the benefits of Home Rule. It's been discussed several times, you know. But it would be nice, maybe just kind of refresh everybody's memory about what those benefits of Home Rule would be. And I could, I could forward you this list there, Administrator Garcia. I'm curious about also addressing the process and the timelines from, let's say, this Board of Trustees passing an ordinance to put a Home Rule Committee on a ballot. And, and then later on for a charter vote. Question I have though is, is there's timing issues for the November general elections. And I would like to know what could we make with a, with a work session with, with, and everyone's opinion about any kind of public outreach that we need on this? Is there a possibility that we could get a question of a charter commission on the November 2024 ballot? I think the deadline for submitting questions is sometime in August. But that only gives us a couple of months to pass an ordinance, get people to apply and put in petitions to become charter commissions. But I'd also like to know if we can't make that work, it could be expensive because it could result in two special elections. And I'd like to know what the cost are, the probable cost of those special elections would be. Whether or not that could be something that we try to do this year or wait till next year. But I believe it's, it's, it's a good idea to keep that ball moving forward. You're talking about economic development. This is one of those foundation pieces that can help economic development efforts as well. And I didn't, don't even know if we have funds available for an election in November for this year. And he did mention, Kevin Bonner, and also mentioned Severance is either going through a Home Rule movement at this time or not. But it might be wise or welcome to when we have a work session, if we can invite maybe someone from a town like Severance who, who's going through the process, kind of explain about what they did and how it's working for them, you know, what kind of notice they gave to the, to residents in the town. And I think that could be instead of like a half hour before a regular board meeting, that could be one of our special board work sessions. Because I think it's going to be, it requires a longer discussion than just, otherwise you're just not going to get deep enough in thirty minutes to do that. But that's, that's the question I've got. And if, if there's other questions from the trustees, I think we could add to this list. And maybe that way we can get good information from staff when we do have a work session.
If I can, just really quick, one other resource I did use because it was recommended to go check out Severance. And is it Firestone that just, there was one that just switched over. If you go to their town websites, you can actually watch their meet and greet Q and A sessions about Home Rule live. Like you can literally turn it on YouTube and I sat and watched it for half a day and watched the different Q and A sessions they had with the community. And then they had different municipalities, members come in as like a panel and actually answered questions, talked with other trustees and items like that. So I know that it is available to watch on YouTube if you end up Googling it to answer additional questions. My only question would be, is it seems like there was a lot of time, effort and energy, hours. It seems like hours and hours and days and days of effort and planning that went into these Q and As. Because what I was hearing when I watched the video is they had stated that it had failed previously because they feel like they did not prepare the residents enough in time. They did not allow them enough time to ask questions. And they feel that's the reason why it failed the first time around and passed the second time around. So I would definitely suggest that if this is something we're looking at, that we get our money's worth when it comes to taxpayer dollars, that if it is going to take a large amount of time, that we look at it as structured educational amount of time. And even if this is something, I know we budgeted for a possible special election, but if it's two special elections, possibly, if that's not in our budget, I know we're getting ready to do the next year's budget identification and numbers, if it's possible to know those costs. Because you're also looking at the attorney's fees and attorney time that is spent invested into an effort like this. And if we're going in, we're looking at approving town staff hours. I would much rather, rather utilize additional funds on getting our town staff fully staffed at what they need and possibly looking at that transition to the 2025. It's very educational when you sit and listen to it. There's pros, there's cons. And the YouTube did a very good job of explaining, but getting to see that interaction with the community. So I'm okay looking at that moving forward, but just want to gauge if this is something next year possibility? Or if we want town staff to put together a work session for this year? Or if this is something where it can go into organization and maybe towards the end of the year in the new budget, look at that work session presented for this next year? The, just some of my ideas on utilizing the town staff time. I love the idea of economic development in general, so it makes it difficult. But that's kind of my feedback on where we're looking at as far as finances and how many hours and investment that goes into it.
So I can offer, we, we've done kind of a draft election calendar to, to see how we would back into the November election. And one of the things that the trustees are required to do is to call a special election to form a charter commission, which was discussed. That needs to be done by resolution. And the election has to be held within a hundred and twenty days of the Board of Trustees calling that special election. So a hundred and twenty days from July, from November fifth is July eighth. So we would have to, no, we can't, I, I find it nearly impossible to do it well. So perhaps, you know, this is something we can talk about when you're doing your strategic planning and see how you want to move forward on that. Like you, I've, I've looked at several municipalities and how they educate, the ones that passed. So looked to see how they educated their municipality and their residents and the work sessions that they held and, and so many different ways of educating their residents because not everybody learns the same way. So there were a lot of different avenues. So I think we can come up with a good plan. I think it's a great idea to investigate. I just don't think we can make the November election for Home Rule based on the need to call for the charter commission.
Well, I, I agree with you and I agree with, with Trustee Teetz as well that this is, this is something I'm passionate about. So I'd like to see it get going. But be honest with you, it is a sell. You have to sell the, the residents on why are we doing this and why should I get out there and vote? And what are the benefits to the town and what's that going to mean for? So, you know, if it doesn't happen until 2025, but we can at least get on a process where we get more information from the board and come up with a communication plan or at least an education plan for the, for the public. I think that would ensure our success.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cannon. Trustee Moyer?
I would just say to that point, I'm all for a work session, but I do, I'm glad that we're looking at post, like, taking our time with this because I think it's really important to Trustee Teetz's point to really make sure that we communicate out all the information that we can to the residents and make sure that we are not just full transparency and creating an environment where everyone has an opportunity to engage and learn and feel comfortable with the decisions that we make moving forward. And I, since the work session last time, my main point And I, since the work session last time, my main points that I would like to explore are the overall cost. And I would also like to look at when we bring this back, staff bandwidth and the project pipeline and what the efforts for this might take away from in the future. And that might speak to our staffing needs.
Thank you, Trustee Moyer. Trustee Weigan.
Oh, yes, I do.
Two things. I too was at the fishing derby and it wasn't just little kids catching fish, Trustee Cannon. But that's my, like, one of my favorite events of the entire year and it is so much fun. And I think partnering with Parks and Rec to have the kids out to Park Day is just brilliant. And I just want to thank Kiwanis because they're awesome and, you know, we'll have our, the bike rodeo coming up soon and our volunteers are just fantastic. So just a shout out to them. And then I want to give a shout out to Cody because last Thursday, I don't know if you all are aware that Safe Routes to School was awarded a ten thousand dollar Safe Routes to Parks grant. And last Thursday, Cody coordinated a fantastic workshop. It was an all-day workshop and we had the morning we spent learning from the National Representative from Safe Routes to Parks who came from Washington to visit us here in Wellington and was sad she was gonna miss Brew Fest. Also, we had in the room State Representative from CDOT, from the Health Department and from the State Parks and Rec. Wildlife and Parks, thank you so much, Cody. And we had Cody, Kelly Hodling, Alex Ivanovitz and Billy from Parks and Rec. And we had Laurlyn from Prost, as well as the Lead Coordinator from PSD and two others from PSD Transportation. So we learned a lot in the morning and then we went out on a walk audit of about four blocks. We went up to the intersection here, looking over to Community Park and then back down this way and around towards the Boys and Girls Club and back up. And it was eye-opening for, I think especially, you know, PSD to come and just walk those streets. Because, you know, you don't realize some things until you're right there doing it. We saw a lot of our issues with ADA. You know, it was, it was a really awesome experience. We got a lot of really good data and information. Our partnerships are looking super encouraging. And they were encouraging us to go for more Safe Routes money in the future. So overall, fantastic job, Cody and team. And it just couldn't have gone better in my opinion and I'm super excited to see what it leads to. So.
Awesome. Thank you, Trustee Moyer. Trustee Weigan.
Me and Trustee Teets toured Northern Colorado Humane Society. That is one awesome facility, the professionalism that they have down there and, you know, there's a lot of love in that place. And I mean, they are concerned, they care for the animals there. So I think we've got where we put our animal control in extremely good hands. You know, they're very professional. When I was talking to them, and I think I also talked to Sergeant Cherry about it, you know, we hired, or we got the Laramie County Sheriff's Department here because we got the best of the best at the best quality price. And I think the same with the Humane Society too. The quality of their service, I think, is beyond. So it was, it was eye-opening.
I would like to agree with that, but also say, if you have not had a chance to visit their new facility, it is pretty amazing, the cat condos and climbing areas that these animals have. So I, I'm old school. I come from the old Humane Society right off of, is it Trilby? Where it used to be and that facility was definitely in need of some major TLC. But to go and get to tour that facility and see that they have entire dog park areas that the dogs can go and run around. They get released from their habitats, but they also have, if they are low on stock of animals, they actually raise a gate between the kennels and these kennels create double, like the size of my storage shed in my backyard kind of areas for these animals to run around. And yeah, so, and then the vet offerings they have right there on site for emergency surgeries and items like that. I did onist and I will go do it this next week on my honor. I do not have my animal licensed, but she will be licensed come this week. But just the, the different intakes and ways and explanations on actual euthanization numbers and reasons for euthanization, we actually got to meet one of the dogs that was going to be euthanized and he actually wasn't. So now he's, they ship animals to different areas and different facilities and they base it off of who's going to adopt an animal. But the one that we saw that I kind of fell in love with, he was completely blind. So, and he was a younger dog, but I mean, they had a geriatric dog in there that was, did they say sixteen? That was still wandering around with them throughout the entire facility, just hanging out in their office. So I will say that I feel that possibly the, the stigma that carried with No Co-Humane previously compared to what I saw and witnessed myself now is a little different. And I will own that I possibly was a bit more judgmental from previous experience with them than what I say in this situation now. It took me, okay, it took me eighteen minutes to get to the No Co-Humane Society from Wellington. So if I were to try and navigate into Fort Collins to go retrieve my animal, I'm probably looking at twenty-five to thirty minutes to in-town to trying to get back out of town. It was actually a very quick drive. I got off at Windsor and shot up and over on the right, over by the airport. And it actually was not a very long drive. So.
Thank you, Trustee Teets, Trustee Weigan. Trustee Daly.
All right, as a comment to the Home Rule item. And a couple of things that Trustee Moyer mentioned is a lot of times when these kind of initiatives come to place, it's contracted services in order to promote campaigning for a, a, a ballot item that might be approaching. So definitely more consideration to be added in addition to a special election or anything like that. So I'm curious about that in addition to the other components that have been raised. So, but hopefully that would help against bandwidth, just the consideration for twenty twenty-five budget likely. So. And I definitely agree with starting that process now. So we're definitely prepared and have ample time to communicate it appropriately and hire the appropriate services. Beyond that, Wellington Middle High School, the elementary schools, it's already been mentioned, but school's out this week. Please don't run over kids, they're about to be out. I always make that announcement when school starts, when school ends. So just be super cautious of loose children. That's why we live in Wellington is so our kids can be safe and loose. So I appreciate all the safety there. Other thing regarding Wellington Middle High School, I don't know if anybody has heard, but they have the opportunity to go to Florida for a workshop. And they have been working their butts off with fundraising. So just as a public service announcement, if you would like to promote, I, our football team is amazing with super young kids. I, I, and it's been the best experience for me for Friday Night Lights. And I've seen beautiful community activities around our high, our football team. They have an opportunity to be even better. So if you are compelled to support our football team in this effort to go to Florida, please, please, please reach out to their boosters. They need our support as much as voting for them on nine news. They actually need dollars at this point. So if you want to put your money where your mouth is, this is a great opportunity to support our community and make it even better. I want to do, moving along to my advisory committees, I haven't actually started with Main Streets yet, but I do want to acknowledge, congratulations to them for their ten-year anniversary. The celebration associated with that is partnering with Wellington Parks and Rec and some other organizations as well. They are having an event. Their ten-year anniversary celebration at the Centennial Park Downtown Park on June fifteenth from eleven AM to three PM. You're gonna see all the cool fun things that we did at, at Kids to Park Day in addition to just acknowledgement and celebration in the Main Streets program. So they're combining the Kids to Park plus this celebration, celebrating, even with live music and kind of items, celebrating Main Street's awesome anniversary for ten years serving our community. My other items I want to talk about are, nothing's going on necessarily with Policy Council associated with Solid Waste, no updates there. Regarding Prost, for those new people, Parks Recreation, Open Space and Trails. Also a tribute to Kids to Park Day, my favorite event of the year too, when the weather is nice. So tons of donations from community partners to give fishing poles and bait to all the attendees who participated. An amazing shout out to all the volunteers. So Kiwanis and we had a huge presence of Wellington Parks and Rec staff as well who ran all the Kids to Park portions. So as an acknowledgement to Kids to Park, part of that fishing derby and that event, they had all of our cool activities out there, which are significant inflatables and fun activities, a sensory area. The big blue blocks that for some reason attract every person ever, teenagers, little kids alike, adults, I see them out there. So amazing investments that our town has made to engage and, and help maybe people who weren't so interested in fishing. Younger siblings, I saw a lot of them out there. So a big thank you to Parks and Rec for running that portion of the event for Kids to Park Day. In addition to Kiwanis amazing volunteers who flawlessly execute the, the fishing derby and, and stock the pond and coordinate everything with all the volunteers and, uh, uh, community partners that donate so many things to that event. And highlight, you know, amenity that we have in town that maybe a lot of people don't know about for our ponds and for fishing. Other Prost updates is during the Kids to Park Day and the Fishing Derby, we did unveil the plans for the dock, the accessible dock that we have. There is some diagrams and information on it. And notice to the community that we have, have received such an amazing grant to make this happen. So that was a big, exciting thing for me to see them so quickly notify the community and get people excited for it. What a perfect event to talk about it. Speaking of that, you know, there's been a lot of effort from Prost and Parks and Rec to seek out and receive this grant. Significant time and effort was put into that. And in response to that, Prost is always considering other very viable projects that, you know, with the cost savings associated with the dock, really viable projects that can increase both utilizing amenities and actually improve the life of a lot of our residents. And I really look forward to them explaining that and introducing some of those ideas. And lots of partnership with local businesses, like Disc Mania, for example, who want to, want to give to Wellington and participate in improving Wellington. So I really look forward to the presentation, which is upcoming in June, for them to talk about all the huge accomplishments that Prost has had and some of their plans for super viable plans that will really improve Wellington. Regarding the Safe Routes to Park, I do want to acknowledge again all the partnership that we're doing. That's part of our strategic plan right now is building these partnerships. So with PSD, with Prost, with, with nonprofits, of course, and those kind of things. I wanted to commend that in alignment with our strategic plan, which, I mean, our nonprofits are even motivated to help and our town is participating in. So thank you so much for that. In mid-June, our Board of Trustees will be attending the Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference, which allows us to learn about legal considerations in Colorado, as well as learn from all the communities who are that have the best practices in our community, in their entire state and who are making big moves. So we get to learn from network and just participate in this conference, which is such a motivating thing for me personally and gives us so many ideas on how to participate and serve Wellington. And I want to leave with this last thought. I want to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day and remembrance of all those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. Speaking to that, Prost has a great idea on how to serve our community further in this same content. And they are organizing a community-funded project for a Veterans Memorial and Community Park. And it's really important that this is a community opportunity to participate and make for that remembrance and just to participate in improving Wellington. An opportunity for people to dedicate and contribute in consideration of their veterans and, and for that memory of them. So if you're interested in learning more about this project or participating or anything, your contact best served is through Prost or contact me or Parks and Rec or one of our many partners who are participating. So happy Memorial Day. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Daly. I don't have a whole lot. I just wanted to thank all our residents for coming out and participating in last week's Town Hall. And give a special shout out to Public Works and the administrative staff for putting on that, putting that on. It was super great to get all the feedback from folks as far as the redesign project goes and, and excellent work on that grant and everything else. So it's su- super exciting stuff. Last thing we've got tonight is an executive session, but I think we'll take a quick five-minute recess before we jump into that if everybody's on board.
Resess and then you're gonna come back and call the executive session?
I'll now resume the May twenty-eighth, I'll now resume the May twenty-eighth regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, time being eight twenty-six PM. Last item we have on the agenda this evening is for an executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title of item H1?
Executive Session for the Purpose of Determining Positions Relative to Matters That May Be Subject to Negotiations, Developing Strategy for Negotiations and/or Instructing Negotiators Pursuant to Section Twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E CRS Regarding Negotiations Related to Matters with the North Pooter Irrigation Company. As Required by CRS Twenty-four dash six dash four oh two two D five two A and two E, the executive session proceedings will be electronically recorded and the record will be preserved for ninety days through August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Do I hear a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Sir, Mr. Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Weigan.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Preton Mason.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I now close the regular meeting and open the executive session, time being eight twenty-seven PM. Members of a public present are asked to leave the room for the duration of the executive session. And to viewers on our live stream, please note that the stream will be ended for the remainder of this meeting.